Let me just do the flag, we can amend the states of America and do the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everybody. I will call the meeting to order. We have a forum. Skip over the next one. We don't have any o's. Do we? Or?
No.
Shouldn't be.
No, there's none this year. Um, oh, twenty twenty four board reorganization.
Yeah, that's.
There we go. I make a motion to appoint A.J. Stone as the chairperson for twenty twenty four.
I will second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, sir. All right. So that means, uh, Mark would be vice chair. You got a problem?
Is that a motion?
It's a motion to make Mark vice chair.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye. Aye, aye, opposed? All right, Mark's vice chair. I believe we are reorganized.
So.
Okay, and I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, approval in minutes.
I'll make a motion to please the minutes.
All right, any discussion on that? There are none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. Got our agenda. Now let's jump into appointments. Does everybody? Anybody sent letters that's want out or some like?
No, that won't happen. That won't happen until after I send a letter out to them.
And wake them up, let them remember that.
Well, you're, you guys don't send anything ahead of time, so. Unless you want to change that, that's the way it's been.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, fine, fine.
Hmm.
We only want to be the watered district. We never appointed anybody to the Winnebago one yet. We're technically appointing somebody as a member there. We need to do that.
Yes.
And then do you want me to take over the Cedar?
If you want to do that, we can make that.
We all take one of them?
Let's, let's start with the.
You got a list.
List. Please. Um. First is Board of Health, Nicole Sheffield. Um, and I did get a application for Deb Purwer. For Veterans Affairs. Got Mike Bodie for the Commissioner again. Conservation Board is Troy Christensen.
He's up. He's been before.
Yeah.
Good.
Then eminent domain, you guys know that list, and I think we're okay until somebody says they don't really, I don't think anybody passed away or anything. That's usually the.
That's usually the way, yeah.
Yeah. The way you leave that list.
Well, it isn't real. Hasn't been real wide.
Oh. That almost scared me. I saw Gary Olson. I'm like, he hasn't been around forever, but the other Gary Olson.
Yep.
Okay, then, um, zoning commission, um, it's just in favor Kathy Meyer and Todd Roth over the ones that are up. Um, zoning board of adjustment, Whisley's the one that's up. Um. I still show all Vans as floodplain administrator. Have you guys decided on rent yet or?
What was the deal on Rich? This guy's gonna take over that for now?
Yeah, he's.
He's dead?
For now, yeah.
Now anyway?
Yeah.
He did, did do the.
He's not on yet, so.
Okay. Well, even in the board meeting, we're there, so. Or will be.
Okay. Then. This gets into your, your guys' now. Um, A.J.'s rep for North, or it's not Northwest Iowa, it's whatever, whatever it changes is now. Um. Second judicial district is Enos and A.J.'s alternate. Central Iowa Tourism is Gene Stow. Um, North Iowa Regional Housing Authority, um, the alternate is Constance Talk Butler. He's the one that was up this time. Nyakog is A.J., Mark, Scott Hegel, and Merlin Bart. Transportation Policy Board is Mark and then Melissa. North Central Regional Emergency Planning District Committee is Mark. Um, Nyakog Loan Fund, revolving loan fund is Chad Nelson. And then we're into the, so Cedar. Will we switch into?
Cool, could switch E- Enos to Cedar and then you'll have to add the Winnebago one.
And A.J.'s on the show, so then who's gonna be, are you gonna be?
He's gonna be doing a bagel even at the meeting.
Okay. That's it, that's it for this year.
All right, is there a motion to approve the list of appointments?
I'll make a motion.
All right, motion and second. Any other discussion on it? Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The one is a.
Feel good?
Yeah.
Your last one?
Authorization. What's that?
Okay, so then that is three point Rich as county engineer. Need a motion for that.
I'm making more than the point, Rich, it's telling me, yeah.
There's most of the point, Rich from his county engineer. I'll second it. Second, and further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Right. Carries.
Okay, then the next one is Rich is hereby authorized and empowered on behalf of the supervisors to execute the certification, its completion of work, and final acceptance with plans and specs. Therefore, in connection with all farm-to-market construction projects in the county, adopt a resolution to comply with provisions of the nineteen seventy Uniform Re- Relocation Assistance and Land Acquisition Policies Act as amended by Title Six of the Surface Transportation Uniform Relocation Assist- Assistance Act of nineteen eighty seven and in accordance with county engineer recommendations for that, that for secondary roads right-of-way payments be three and a half times one hundred percent valuation. Fence remove the eighteen dollars. Is that still decent?
I have no idea.
Eighteen dollars a rod or?
Yep.
Yep. Barbed wire, thirty-two dollars a rod.
For woven?
Or for woven, oh yeah. I'm sorry, eighteen for barbed, thirty-two for woven. Um, crop damage, fourteen for per acre for corn and eight fifty per acre for other crops. That's still.
It's sound good. Could be good.
I haven't changed that much, I didn't.
Yeah.
We're probably doing, yeah. Yeah.
Don't need a motion on that.
I'll make a motion on.
I'm making certain about. Yeah, there's motion by Enos, second by Mark. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye. Or if I opposed? All right, the motion will carry.
And then the auditor authorization, um, to pay bills. Pay the following bills during meeting adjournment, salaries and payroll previously approved by the board, insurance payments and unemployment quarterly report payments, emergency expenses deemed necessary by the county audit.
I'll make that a motion.
No, second. Yeah, motion and a second to approve the waterer authorization. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Smoke area.
Not authorization.
There?
Yep.
Yeah. You know, we're at the, uh, engineer, which he's not here today, so. Fine, uh, drainage, we had a repair request with Jay Hopper.
Yep.
You don't need to sign those because things were still new. New, there.
Yeah, we'll go with the flames first.
Second that. Yeah, if I say approved anything, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Here. I'm sure you get some email for the day after the repairs.
Yes.
Just need to try to find somebody to do it.
Yep, that's the way I read it, that we want like us to be.
Bob should be, Bob's only to be interested in it all.
He's in the area, and then I'm sure the ball right now, there's still, there's still.
Trying to go, you know. I can reach out to, uh, see if we can find somebody for that.
Next to him, so.
Yeah. Uh, there just was out there working.
Yeah, he was out that direction a while ago.
For the bowl, right area, really. All right, we don't want Nick to see if he's still got equipment out that way to range.
Well, who ended up doing Davidson's? That was the last one we did.
I'm there too.
Is he still out there?
He doesn't need it.
Didn't Mark have a ball?
He's affected himself, wasn't he?
Oh, was he?
Yeah, Meyer, thought he just had some down here.
They had, but I didn't see that. He just said he'd like you to fix that week and I didn't.
He's himself. All right, I'll reach out to Nick, but is there a motion to approve the repair request for D D eleven app?
I'll make that a motion.
Motion and second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? All right, that's regular claim.
No.
Open payroll. I'm making a motion to approve the. Fair oil. Motion to approve the payroll claims of market.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Just the next three.
All right, so we go down to construction evaluation resolution.
Yep.
Evolution twenty twenty four dash zero one, construction evaluation, whereas I have code section four fifty nine three oh four three sets up procedure for board supervisors wishing to adopt an instruction evaluation resolution. Laid instruction of a finite feeding operation structure. And whereas only county that have adopted a construction evaluation gets submitted to the Department of National Resources and adopt recommendation to approve or disapprove construction permit application regarding the post-compliant feeding operations. Where as only counties they have adopted the construction evaluation resolution and submitted an adopted recommendation. May contest the D N R decision regarding a specific application. And whereas by adopting a construction evaluation resolution, the board supervisors agree to evaluate every construction permit application for proposed confined feeding operation. Structure received by the board of supervisors between February first, twenty twenty four, and January thirty first, twenty twenty five. And submit an adopted recommendation regarding that application to the D N R. Whereas the board supervisor was conducting evaluation of every construction permit application using the master metric created in Iowa code section four fifty nine three oh five. But the board's recommendation to the D N R may be based on a final score of the master metric or maybe based on reasons other than the final score in the master matrix. Now therefore be resolved by the board of supervisors of each county. At the board supervisors hereby adopt construction evaluation. Resolution pursuant to Iowa code section four fifty nine dot three oh four. Motion to approve resolution.
Make motion to adopt the construction elevation.
Resolution. All right, welcome to the second.
I'll second it.
Yeah, roll call vote, Lowberg, aye. So maybe, huh, Stone, aye. Revolution adopted. Oh, right. Hourly wages.
Okay, now remember that one is not effective until the budget years are.
Yep.
July or make that clean. And I put that in my motion or in the motion there, yeah. Um, if we bumped it to four percent, which is the auditor recorder, um, treasurer, that would be fifteen seventy-five. Not many people use it. I know public health uses it. I think that about.
Yeah. Somebody else is probably above that anyway, right?
Yeah.
I, I guess I.
People would get it.
I'll make more. Take their wage to
four.
Fifteen seventy-five, four percent increase?
Yep.
Is motion by Mark for a second?
I'll second that.
All right, any further discussion?
Clarification, that will be in the new budget given.
July first, twenty twenty four?
Yep.
Yep.
All right. Uh, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion will carry.
Our official pa- official newspapers are the North of the Anchor and the Manly Junctions, but no.
Okay.
Motion to adopt the official newspapers.
All right, that's motion by Mark for a second.
I'll second that.
Second by Enos. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, papers are official. Mileage?
You guys had decided to go with the federal. So that went up to point or sixty-seven cents from fifty-five point five. So that'll be effective January or now. It's not.
Federal mileage rate, right?
Yeah.
Or use the federal.
Use the IRS mileage rate?
Yeah.
There's most in their second?
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. Carries.
What's this meal rate?
Thirty-five bucks to bill?
I don't see anything wrong with that.
All right, same off everything to go to. I can't see what's a few there all day. You get one meal anyway.
But there is one department that went up to fifty-seven, I think, last year, so. If it's, I think thirty-five to not.
But I don't, um, just because if you go to McDonald's lately, you can walk out there under twenty dollars. Um, and I got guys that do go down to the cat and they don't give meals at a lot of those stuff.
They have, just for discussion, I guess, I don't want to make the question around if the meals are provided. Do we reimburse for meals that they don't?
No.
We can reimburse, so. I don't, I don't know if they have to be in the policy. Remember.
What's that?
They're just the ones that are not.
Well, maybe you please that.
If you don't stay overnight.
Well, yeah, we paid their, if we paid the reservation registration fee and meals are included. Any meals that were filled out or tried to be reimbursed for during that.
But again, how do we know what meals are provided and what meals aren't?
Well. Yeah.
I see usually it's a lunch thing, and if you're overnight, you're probably buying your own supper, but we get reimbursed for that.
I mean, like all the ice accidents are pretty much.
Yeah.
Breakfast dinner and supper.
Yeah, you can pretty much eat free at those.
A lot of the cabin stuff, you pay for every.
Correct.
Even if we try to get them into the, down there to the buffet or whatever you want to call it, at the academy, they've gone up in price to, it's like forty-five dollars for a whole.
Soon to third. That.
Thirty-five right now. If you raise it ten percent, you'd be like a thirty-eight. But you are right. If, if they're furnishing, if they register for this stuff and they furnish a meal there, you should eat that meal. You should not turn one in there.
They're already, they're paying for toys.
Yeah.
Then fast, but then how do, that, it's just, how do you please that? And that's one more thing. We gotta hunt people down and go, why didn't you eat the meal that was there?
Well, I'm just don't pay it. I mean, if the, if the.
Well, then we'll have to.
If they're registered events, I mean. Yeah, it probably needs to be policy. Yeah, I, I agree. I don't think it's in the handbook then. But that's just, it's just a question for discussion.
And it makes sense. If there's food available, you shouldn't have to.
You shouldn't have to be reimbursed just because you don't want to go to the at-night meeting and supper. You want to go uptown. There's a difference.
Yeah.
I think that's just my opinion. So, like I say, that's something.
That could be a, we need to go through that handbook and policies anyway.
It's bound, it's, it's a balance, four years, four years, at least five.
After I got on, I think it was.
We probably go through that again.
So you want to let it ride and then change it, or do you want to bump it up, or what do you want to do?
Thirty-eight.
Yeah, that'd be for now, and if we decided we change it again. Direct it with the policy.
I'll make that a motion. I may raise the reimbursement rate up to thirty-eight dollars.
Yeah, there's motion there, second?
I'll second that.
Right, any others got? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. Water just an improvement. Heard anything back on D N R yet that I've heard, so. Rebecca, Alyssa.
We have the exec board meeting on Monday, and I have it set up for, um, the Winnebago Conservation Center. And then the same with the advisory board meeting on Wednesday. And I am going to go to the Renewable Fuels Conference in Des Moines on Thursday. If anybody wants to come with, that's fine. It's a free event, and then C V N is on Friday. You can come with if you'd like as my guest.
Okay, with, uh, the conservation building, that's between Forest City and Lake Mills, isn't it?
Yep.
Right on the highway?
On how? Yeah.
Thompson Corner?
So.
Okay, I thought that was it. Okay. Sound good.
All right.
No?
Nope.
Good. Thank you.
You bet.
Oh, here we have discussion. Nothing's changed other than there are people up giving petition time on the south portion and the west portion, so.
Oh, I got a question for you that I thought of. You know, these townships can do both fire and EMS. When they do their budgets now, are they go, you know, some of them got some money left over. Are they going to?
But if you're gonna charge them another way.
Well, that's not gonna come around.
That's assuming this all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know if they're, if they're looking at adjusting their levies. So.
They should. I mean, it's.
Well, because.
Back that up.
They, uh.
Well, they'll still get the money for that year though.
Well, when we got money to work.
Because they, there's, they weren't gonna be able to come up with enough, I know, on the west side and south side either, wouldn't come up with enough for that, and for no way, so. I don't know if anybody's.
Well, on the west side, if they all went together, they. True, don't, two of the townships. Danville and Danville and Silverlake would come up short, but Fertile and Bristol had plenty of money left over.
Yeah, because it's, I'd sound like that's why they're going after the EMS district is because.
I thought they were doing it even.
Probably, yeah, yeah, evening out so that Danville's or Silverlake's not paying for Danville.
Or West.
So, yeah. You know, everybody, by that doing that, everybody's paying the same.
Correct.
Right. It, it's just more of a fair trade, I think, so that's probably why they're going that route. I don't know. I haven't been to.
Like Bristol, last year they only used twenty-two cents.
Right.
So. They got plenty of money if they want to actually act some of it for that, but to keep them all the same. You know.
Well, they, they could do more. I mean, they don't reimburse the local fire department. They've used most of it both like now, but. Well, that's up to them, I guess.
Right, yeah.
Their, that's weird. It's separate thing. They should consider it anyway.
They should sit and, they should discuss that.
Because nothing else. I mean, if it were doing this on a per call or calls, or they could reimburse for their own calls and their, their townships too.
Yeah. Guess that's their choice. I'll just ask them. We're supposed to meet again, uh, the ninth. So I'll ask those guys from the west if they've considered that, if they've been speculating on that or not.
Because I'm assuming they haven't turned in about the two.
Um, they just, they just went out on Friday.
Fridays. Yeah.
It just, it's something I thought.
Right, right.
Yeah, because you know, there is a possibility. Even if you don't come up with enough, you can cut, you can put a dent in the thing because it is their responsibility.
It is.
Yeah. And it's, uh, you know, Danville was a three different fire department, so. They go to hand down Manly and you have the.
Yeah. Yeah, they were, Danville and Silverlake were gonna be short. With Bristol and Fertile, we're just fine.
Sure.
Lincoln pays, and the Manly and Clinton.
That's why they're bad.
Yeah, Lincoln ain't got nothing left. Not unless.
Oh, I'll, I'll ask.
Back off a little bit. Right. Okay. Maybe they ought to talk about that.
We see the price of equipment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
New truck. Of course, we do have W C B A.
Metro, yeah. We, we took.
You are lucky there.
We took along, or, uh, we got a pretty good grant from W C B A, but we still, we still had to finance hundred fifty thousand.
For quick other.
For a new truck.
Oh. Yeah, well, yeah, I'm sure they're all.
This one was, and nineteen was four point five. But it's a thirty-year investments. Hopefully, hopefully the.
On the good. Are you gonna get all the people on the western edge or you gonna?
I'll see them all next week. I'll see the, some of the, there's a committee, so there's one from each township that comes to that meeting. They'll be there next weeks. If that's. Thanks, gonna see what the, what their thoughts are, that they're discussing. Uh, people's service, annual adjustment on compensation. Got a letter from them. Annual increase, uh, this year, three point one percent. Plus they add one percent on top of that, so four point one total. Uh, taking the annual compensation for chemicals from eighteen thousand three thirty to nineteen thousand eighty-two dollars. And, or no, that's, I'm sorry. That's, um, monthly maintenance. Repair, non-cattle, though. Chemicals go from forty-four thousand nine eighty-seven to forty-sixty thirty-one. Four point one percent. There are motion to approve the adjustment of compensation.
Have we got the water to erase the deck out there yet, or is that still?
No.
They've got a meeting on that.
Jason was still working with the hotel.
Yep.
Um, he has been working with the manager out there discussing that because the owners are from Ohio.
The next holiday and.
Yeah. New owners, they're from Ohio. Um, and so communication with them is they're not from country, a little tough.
Yep.
Understanding, so I think the manager has been contacting with them, whether or not they come out here for a meeting or not. I, I don't know, but he's still working with them first to see about getting them connected and then if not, there's not, you're not starting paying.
Right. Regardless.
Yeah, get connected at some point, but.
Yeah.
So I know he then, sounds like they had put some money into their system, which they probably shouldn't have done. They probably could have.
Converted.
Connected, and then they would have been money ahead.
Yeah, I know there needs some improvements out there.
Yeah, so, no, he was still working with them before we actually could get the meeting together with the rest, so.
I wasn't sure where you guys are.
Yeah.
So.
It's went on to quite some point.
Yeah, I know. I, I know those, they were working.
Yeah. Except they're, they're from Ohio, I think you said.
Well. It's motion to, so the conservative bridge of my country.
Yeah, those motions are second.
I'll second that.
All right, any others got some? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Yeah, motion carries. Um. Department had the discussion. Anybody?
I was gonna try to have the budget reviews on the eighth, but I know you guys have a meeting, so it's gonna be the fifteenth again. And we have everybody come through.
Oh.
And the libraries will be here on the eighth.
Any other department? Provide weekly, Lowberg? I didn't have anything. Or?
They're not either, I guess.
All right. Again. But yeah. About a care connections. He was the, the zoom only meeting. Let's do, uh, prove claims basically. And, uh, if we have to be a contract adjustment or two, but um, we are hiring one of the, uh, coordinators. Uh, took a different job. So we're trying to hire someone in either Kusue, Winnebago, or work. Um, and there's gonna be maybe some changes that come with that, but, uh, they are accepting applications till the. Um, where there's gonna be maybe some changes that come with that, but uh they are accepting applications till the ninth, eighth or ninth or something like that.
There's a line in the paper for them.
Yeah, when they advertise, yeah, they advertised over here, they're, they're trying to find somebody this area. Um, to uh. Because with, with, uh, it was Sandy, who was the one that left, and she was, she did a portion of this area, so they're trying to find somebody over here, because what they're thinking of changing is just having one person do the two counties over here. Two or three, and then do two or three in the center and two or three in the west, so that they're doing adults and children instead of, they had kind of. So there's like a little reorganization of that, but I'm pretty sure Ann, Ann will stay here on our side, but they're trying to find somebody uh over this way, yeah, so they gotta, gotta work with whatever, see if, where they get applicants, where they can hopefully, where they can put them at for location, so.
Would it help, would it help to pop it out on our Facebook page?
I don't know, it'd hurt.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I can, I'll check with Melissa and we.
Hopefully all the counties will be doing that.
Yeah, I mean.
That are involved in.
Yeah. So yeah, that's, maybe that's. But, yeah, so there's a job up, you know, down that one, but it's certainly won't really get over there.
Does any discussions with the do one with detention region, et cetera, at all, about counseling? I mean, I know, I thought they were gonna reach out.
Hey, see those. Melissa may have, she CEO of the.
Yeah, that's.
They do a lot of, she'd be the one doing the.
Um, we don't officially have anybody, and so then some of the counties are not wanting to pay for what they were billing back, and we're not qualified, people in the building are qualified, so they're looking at doing that, I know.
Oh, that's great. I know, like I said, a lot of that's all changed, you know, in the last year and a half or whatever, since they implemented child services, so, um, I know we've been, we've been uh for a while, making sure that we keep forgetting all the services, and then we're up the, we're up the snuff with the state, we just it's a little tricky on some things, but. So, that's all I have. All right, well. Any on the, need to on the agenda, future agendas that you? I know we'll probably have a fair board appreciation in, in January sometime, but I haven't seen that letter yet.
Yeah.
But I know it will be coming. Other than that, I guess I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn, sorry.
All right. All the favorites say I. I, meeting is adjourned, thank you, everybody.